And those rates there, twenty dollars per yard with a four yard minimum. The enforcement process that we begin, how it kind of runs is, code enforcement officer will go by and it succeeds and issue the location. A tag is placed on the door, explained that you have until eight AM approximately twenty-four hours of the next business day to remove our deal of the materials that are there that were not supposed to be there. They'll take pictures and at the time they'll take pictures of the actual notice on the door so that we have a record of it and then enter the information into our system. They'll come back the next day and do a re-inspection to see, verify whether the person has taken the opportunity to, to remove the items. Sometimes people will call and just go ahead and pay for a special pickup as opposed to having to remove the items. But by and large, a lot of people, as you'll see in the numbers later, will just go ahead and take care of it and pull it back until it's actually their time. If the items have been removed, the violation is cleared and no further actions taken or needed. If the items remain, additional set of pictures are taken to verify that it's still there on the next day and the address is sent to solid waste to remove that bulk and brush. And then lastly, the associated fines and fees are placed on the water bill and for the person. As you can see here over the course of the first six months this year, each dock represents a location. It's kind of hard to see zoom up on this map. There's over a thousand dots on that map. As you can see, it's spread out all over town. We're not focused on any certain areas. We try to be all-inclusive. Dead zone areas, you can see there in downtown areas where there's not many residential residents or along Highway seventy-five or right in highways where there's not any residential. Basically, we've worked all of the city. And here are the numbers, the incident is January third, June, being a little over a thousand total tags being placed. And as you can see in the far right, our compliance, we, by and large, most people are compliant. Once they get that initial tag, three out of four people are going out there and removing that material or, or taking care of it somehow.
And the theory there is they're removing it in a very short period of time, right? Because we go out, we tag it, we go out twenty-four hours later. And if it's removed, then that means it's been removed in one day's time. So we feel like that's a, seventy percent success on that to me is, is, is a home run.
Like I said, for the, for the six-month period, you're looking at a little over a thousand incidents. Penalties and charges, as you can see here of the twenty-five-ish percent or so that do not comply, you're looking at in the neighborhood of seventy-five thousand dollars over. Once we extend this throughout the year, of course, we're going to still monitor. But, you know, we're on track based on these first six months. We're like in the neighborhood of a seventy-five thousand dollar income. That could be used to facilitate another person or, or whatever direction the council may see fit. We only have two people currently, so we're only currently able to actively work hard. We, we spread them across the whole city, but by and large, it would, it would be beneficial for a third person because the solid waste is working in one quadrant. And currently with two employees, we're covering three quadrants. And I think we would, I think there's more out there that we could get. I mean, we, we look at it now and feel like we're probably getting somewhere in the sixty to seventy percent range. So I feel like there are more out there that we could catch. Biggest thing here being continuing education. As I had said at the council meeting previously, we started working on packing and we're getting real close to that being complete. And that will be coming out here very shortly. As you see here, that information will contain information on the bulk and brush program as well as a calendar for the current year, which will give people an exact week. A lot of people get confused on five week, five Monday months. Because that fifth week is, is not the first week of the next. A lot of people think after they've waited four weeks, it's time to put it out again. So that will be beneficial as well as there'll be a considerable amount of information on just your regular trash service as well as recycling program. And then the updated current quadrant maps that will include areas that we've been extending and previously updated on the quadrant maps. Here are the annual costs. You asked to look at those numbers. And so here, as you see, labor being the biggest brunt of the cost. Landfill cost and the brush cost are fixed, you know, things that we have to pay when either having brush balls or, or taking to the landfill. We compared, a micro bit of comparison of the labor versus prior to how we used to do it many years ago. Which I've been here many, so I was here a few times. We used to have departments actually provide extra employees. In fact, we did it twice a year. But looking at the cost of the labor just alone, it was in the seventy percent range just to provide one pickup for one month out of the year. So leave us to say, if you did that twice a year, you're looking at only two months of pickup time versus this is twelve months. Twelve pickup times throughout the year. So we're providing a much greater service for not a significant amount of money. As I said before, we're willing to deliver these packets out quickly. Soon we will, we're going to have those translated into, have a Spanish version as well. And also a reminder, like I said, this is only six months. We want to continue to monitor this out through the rest of the year and potentially come back at the beginning of the year. Next year, a full twelve months will be done and then another place we'll look at how we continue. Any questions?
Kevin, I do have a couple of questions for you. So those trucks that you guys are picking up with now, they, they equipped with cameras that you're snapshotting of the code violations?
On the bulk and brush, we do not currently have all of the bulk and brush with cameras.
I knew you were working on that.
We do have some of the residential automated trucks that, that are outfitted with cameras now. We hope to continue outfitting, but it's a, a large cost. But everything we have brought off the bat, so we're, they're giving that as we.
Primary bulk and brush trucks have video recording here. We have some commercial front load trucks with video recording and a few of the residential are working to gradually fit all of them as a deep replacing. We have currently down the bulk trucks that do have that video while the old students leave as we roll them out.
And I'm assuming you guys are interconnected with the system that we have. I'm assuming for violations or addresses or specific where it shows that multiple code violations, that specific address.
Yes.
So are, is it possible, or are you guys currently looking for other violations when you're driving past those houses maybe that are, I mean, in the general area of a code violation, if there's multiple violations, does that get picked up through that?
Yes, the, the, the code enforcement officers, if they're at a location and they see other things that are potential problems, just that.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious. We get more calls and questions about code violations, I think, than anything. So if we can streamline that process and have you guys working with the other departments, that, that's a, that'd be a tremendous thing for us.
Does, yeah. Is this labor costs, is it code enforcement officer?
No, that's strictly picking up the trash.
So they're spending a good majority of their time on this program?
Yes.
And how many is that? Two, three, four?
Two.
Two?
Currently two.
So you're saying you need an extra person?
No, I'm saying that I feel like, well, yeah, I'm saying that I feel like we can, we can catch more situations a third officer or potentially, you know. We'll have more data after twelve months. I can give you a more clear answer about that after twelve months. But yeah, right now, I'd say based on when I drive around, it's, it's tough for two officers to cover the whole city.
So, so just to be clear too, this, the annual program costs are the cost for the drivers for which there's two? Three, three drivers?
Three.
Okay. The two employees that we have are on the enforcement side. And, but they're, they're, they do enforcement, I mean, they do all sorts of enforcement, this and others. And so they're not included in this labor number because they're on the enforcement side.
Yes.
So they have, they're already doing this brush cleanup and they are noticing other things, correct? Plus we have two code enforcement.
Just two.
Two.
The three drivers that pick up trash do not have anything to do with addressing code violations. They're strictly there to pick up the trash. The two code officers are the ones that issue the tags.
So whenever the brush people see the problem, they call the code enforcement?
No.
No.
What, the, the, the three brush drivers will work within their quadrant. The two code enforcement officers will go out and drive the other three quadrants to look for violations in those areas. So they're not just looking for bulk and brush violations, they're looking for all kinds of violations.
So it's not about just calling in our citizen complaint or they're actually out there?
Some, sometimes we get those calls, but we're also actively, I wouldn't say proactively out patrolling the neighborhoods on the weeks that are not associated with what's being picked up to make sure that others don't have their debris out too, too soon. One other thing that I want to point out too here that are kind of buried in the numbers, but of the violations and notices that we've issued, there's a very low percentage of repeat offenders. So what that means is, over time, you would think that this number will go down. As people understand the program and become more compliant, that that number will go down. There's always going to be some number, some element that don't, but that was an interesting stat to me is that of the citations that were issued, most, vast majority weren't repeat offenders, I guess is the way to say it.
So out of that thirty percent, you end up getting a hundred percent compliance at some point, you know, from assuming?
Yeah, completely. We can put it on the water bill. One hundred percent, yes.
So my question about the water bill, and that's brand, so we, we attach this fine to the water bill.
Yes.
But we can't turn the water off?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Not paying the water bill or the brush?
The way the ordinance is written, any, any associated monies that's owed on that account, it, it doesn't matter. We, because I've had people come in and say, or come to them and say, I'm just going to pay my water bill, I'm not going to pay the fine. It's still an outstanding balance distribution warrant.
And same with trash as well. So we have water, sewer, trash, you know, the, the dollar for the prime funds, et cetera. So if you don't pay any of, your bill has to be paid in full, no matter what the item is on the bill. You can't specify and pay one and not the other.
And that's only for brush pickup? That's not for all code violations, I'm assuming?
Correct. We don't put code violations for trash jumping debris, for instance, on the water bill enough.
Well, I know one of the concerns that I have with, and maybe you've clarified this with the calendar, is my quadrant is the first one that you all do. And looking at this month, it's supposed to be, it had said, the first of the month, you know? And the first of the month is a Thursday. So in the southeast area of Sherman, they think, ah, it's supposed to be, I need to get it out. So that's actually, it didn't start until today. But so we need to educate.
So we've reworded on the new pliers and things that will be, you know, say the first Monday.
The first Monday, so then it would have been today as opposed to, because one of the problems that I have seen is that people think they're following the rules.
Right.
And they're putting it out almost a week early.
Which is exactly what turns it, so you didn't, you wanted people to have a better understanding.
Right. And I appreciate that. And I think the main concern that, or at least I think most of the council has with this, is that we don't like, we want our city cleaned up. We're not only dumping it out in fields or in vacant lots or anything, so we want to provide the service. But it doesn't do us any good if everybody is putting their trash out a week early, two weeks early, and it sits out there. We just look like we got trashed. And especially to new people, businesses, industries coming in, they don't understand. You know, why do you have all this stuff out? So we want to educate our citizens. And when you were asking about the enforcement people, they're not only looking for violations, if I understand, for brush and trash being put out, but they're also looking for people with cars parked in their yard. They're looking for other types of violations. And so there's only two of them out there trying to cover a couple hundred miles of streets here in Sherman. I remember how many miles we've gone.
Two sixty-five.
It used to be like two hundred and twenty, I'm making this up.
Two sixty-five.
Okay, so that's a lot of miles for two people to cover and catch all those violations. So I hope we can look at adding a third person in the future. I don't know if they would fit into this year's budget, but thank you for the clarification on Mondays.
And Kevin, just to clarify that, more, you could put it out on Monday, but it may not get picked up till Tuesday sometimes, right?
It has to be out at seven AM on Monday.
It may not even be till Thursday or Friday.
It may get picked up later.
You're correct, because one driver will come, come through and pick up the bulk. Like I said, it goes to two locations, so it's two separate trucks. They'll come through and pick up all the bulk and then they'll come back and pick all the brush. It may be, especially if we've had a storm or we've had some incident like that that has caused us behind or, you know, we have breakdowns, drivers out, you know, there's sometimes things people lay there too.
I know I've been on one of your, a lot of thousands of phone calls and said, hey, I put my stuff out on Monday and it's not gone yet.
It's still there.
Yeah.
What we're trying to do is educate the citizens that this is a free service to them. And the only reason we're penalizing them is that they did not follow the rules. I have gotten plenty of calls because I'm the one that's directed when they get that two hundred dollar water bill to call and talk with. And so we try to educate them, this is a free service to them, but they have to follow the rules. And that's why we're changing the language to that it's the first, or it's the Monday of the, of your week. And one of the things that we're also doing is every citizen has one get out of jail free card. And we're keeping track of those that we have allowed that one free card to. So if they violate the second time, they don't get that fine waiver. So we, we are keeping track.
And they still, he, he is waiving the fine for them, but he's still.
Never, never waived the fee.
We have never waived the fee, correct. So they are actually having to pay for the, the removal of the brush to start cashing fine on that person's.
So I know sometimes it's tough because just this past time I was on the phone telling you, well, when you found, got it taken care of on First Street, somebody put their brush and their bulk pickup behind a telephone pole and behind a tree. There is no way with our vehicles that they can pick that up. People have got those, they're not getting it out of the truck. They'll pick it up.
It happens a tremendous amount that, that is blocked.
I think you all must have tagged them because eventually it all got moved over to where, but I had watched it and it was behind, yeah. So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kevin.
I have a question for you, which may not be appropriate for this, but just to clarify, I know at least one gentleman in the audience had asked me before the meeting about registrations out on vehicles, flat tires. Is that a code enforcement or is that a police enforcement type situation?
Code enforcement.
Yes.
Okay, just to clarify, sorry.
Code enforcement makes all this and then they take that to the beginning and follow it up.
One question, Kevin. Tires, they put those out there, is that something specific you have?
No.
Have you called and there's a question, they need the tires?
Bring it to, they had to bring it to the drop-off center or send it to a tire store. All right.
Go ahead. Go ahead, counsel. We think that everyone would be disappointed if I didn't know how I did not like this program. I, I, I never have understood the, the real philosophy behind it, that we provide that service. Someone wants to get their trunks trimmed and we're going to pay to have their trunks, their brush all off. And to me, I look at it half, the glass half full or half empty, or how we're going to talk about it. But we've been doing this program for ten years. We've been educating our citizens for ten years and we still have over a thousand violations. I, I, you guys know because I've emailed to you, I'm taking pictures and it, it, it just, it's the same people over and over again. And when I, I drive the same route to work and, you know, I, on one day there's eleven violations and the next day it's up to, and it's not as required. And I just think we're a code enforcement people, it's been way too much time monitoring it. And I, I never understood why we went away from the, twice a year. A lot of other cities do that. If you want additional pickup, then you call and you get, you pay to get a pickup. We did it spring, we did it fall. I can't see where you can say when you drive around and you see violations, and they're big violations. I mean mattresses and you name it on the side of the road that sit there for two or three weeks. And they do sit there for two or three weeks, that that is the intent of this program. And I just don't see how, and, and people that have rent houses, they abuse it. The renter moves out, they have to evict the renter, haul that stuff to the street and it'll sit there for two or three weeks. And I just don't see how that is viewed by, or, or is the intent of this program. And we talked about, we want to save, I mean, we have areas that the trash is going to be dumped. I mean, that's, we're going to do that anyway. But I don't see why, if we're spending three hundred and seventy thousand dollars and we couldn't just spend that on picking up, probably a fraction of that of picking up, be it done. So, I mean, it's obvious that everyone else is okay with this and it's, it's fine. I just, I want to go on record that I don't think it's worth it. I've been here, been this chair a long time and ten years and we're still having over a thousand violations. I don't think that it's actually worth it. So that's my two cents. I know y'all will be disappointed probably. Give it to you. Anyways.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Right. Before review, clean nineteen twenty twenty draft budget, Mary.
Yes, uh, this draft budget includes a property tax rate of point four eight nine, which is lower than the rate that was presented at the budget workshop of point five oh two. Uh, the reason for the decrease is our property values were higher than we had budgeted. You know, we, we look at things very conservatively and so we had, we were able to lower the, the tax rate to generate the same amount of revenue. Uh, since we did increase the, the tax rate last year to fund debt service, most of the increase in taxes is going to debt service. If you remember in twenty eighteen, our, um, our debt service was about two million a year. Well, next year it'll be about four point four million. So most of that, that increase is going to that extra debt service on the twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen certain pieces of obligation. Uh, the budget also contains the four dollars per solid waste residential account decrease that equates to about three cents on the tax rate. So the, the effect on the taxpayers, they'll feel about a forty-five cent tax rate. Uh, we have funded additional positions such as a dispatcher, three parts maintenance for the municipal con growth ball fields and a solid waste driver. So is there any questions? We can go through it line by line if you like.
No.
I'll have a chat.
So there will be, uh, there's no action tonight. Uh, there will be, obviously we'll bring back the ordinance and we'll have the vote, our vote kicking in. So, uh, that will come in later time, but this is, uh, this is the time to tell us if, um, there's something that needs to be changed because it gets more difficult, uh, to do that after tonight really, so.
Well, I think everybody knows where I stand on the tax rate and I, I personally do not think we should increase it. And I believe, uh, looking to the future with what has evolved, I'm going to be having to come back there. Also given the fact that we had three, over three million dollars in surplus to our sales tax last year. I think asking the citizens to burden property value increase and a tax increase in the same year with those other factors is just too much. And that's just my opinion. I know other people are going to have different opinions and I appreciate them. I think you guys are doing a good job. I think all the projects you have teed up are great. I just think a little bit more conservative approach to them will be my personal take.
Well, I understand how the tax rate affects our M and O. And at the end of the day, that's the number that we need to keep up for future growth. But I was hopeful that we would get an offset to basically be a net zero for residents. And I'm hopeful that we can.
Any other thoughts?
Five discussion on proposed tax rate for this new year, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Discussion on the budgets, the little budget and proposed tax rate, Mary.
Yes, if the property tax rate that is proposed is higher than our effective tax rate or rollback rate that the state requires, that we have two public hearings and adopt the rate at a separate meeting. Uh, this agenda item schedules these meetings and the vote on the tax rate.
If there's no discussion, then I will make a motion. I move to propose a tax rate of forty-eight point nine cents per hundred dollars of valuation for the upcoming budget year and to set public hearings on this proposal as presented.
Motion, do we have a second?
So what we're doing here is basically just setting a calendar. We're going to have two additional public hearings. This is not considered one of those, correct?
Correct. This is not one of the public hearings to set.
Two additional public hearings and then what was the other?
And then above.
Above, separate.
Is it a separate meeting?
So there would be time for three other, three other meetings to discuss the budget. Is that safe to say?
Uh, there will be, um, three other times to discuss the rate and two for the budget, I believe.
Right. And the requirement, we do have to adopt the budget before we adopt the rate, but we do have some time limitations on public hearings. They have to be so, so many days apart and then the, the vote has to be so many days after the final hearing. So you do run out of time at some point. You can't do everything at once since the, the calendar is set by mistake.
So the calendar is not taking us into a corner as far as what we can do, changes that we can make at this point?
That's correct. Um, assuming we schedule the meetings as presented tonight.
I, I, I do, I mean, I'm not saying that I'm against the budget or the tax rate at this point, but I, I do have some questions. And I have a few things I'd like to clarify, but I think that the process will allow that, so we'll go. I'm going to make the second.
Okay. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any votes?
Aye.
I'm a favorite. You're a post?
No, I'm a favorite.
Okay. All right, motion passed.
I'm the second, so I have.
Okay. Review of the draft capital program from nineteen twenty-four and set up public hearing for Monday, August nineteenth, twenty nineteen.
Uh, the city charter requires preparation of a five-year capital program for approval by the city council in conjunction with the annual budget. Uh, the program for this year includes over two hundred million dollars in projects. Uh, this is spread over five years. Only the first year is funded as part of the fiscal year twenty budget. The general services consists of entirely street projects and utility projects. Um, in the program include the northwest sewer out by Preston Club and the sewer that is also going to serve the new Sherman High School and development in that area. Uh, the capital program will be on the August nineteenth agenda for your approval.
Okay, thank you, Mary. With that, with no action, we are down to citizen requests. Anybody want to address the council's seeking?
Yeah. Okay. How about two cents for you? Hopefully we get, I shouldn't do that. Peter Tracy, seven hundred Southbound saying, hopefully we get this draft on the truck pickup and all that. That's something I noticed is I, I ride on my bicycle through the neighborhood and I got a three mile route that I ride and I talk to everybody in the neighborhood when I go through there. And some of the things that they emphasize is, well, they don't know what they're supposed to do with their trash out, but it's out there and I see it's, you know, helter skelter all tossed around and that. So getting some published information out there is going to be helpful for the citizens to know what they're supposed to do with the trash pickup and everything. That's one positive. Sean and I talked prior to the meeting about these vehicles throughout the neighborhood. And like I said, I got a three mile route that I ride and I stay off Langley Street to east of Dewey and south of Lamar. And there's dozens of cars, some of them just went out of registration, some of them have been out of registration for three years. And a lot of them got flat tires out there, so, you know, code enforcement, if they're out there doing something. Something else I noticed throughout the old park addition, there's a lot of potholes within the street. And I've noticed that the pavement in that street is only like a quarter of an inch thick, if that's the, and what appears is causing these potholes is when the residents back out of their driveways and then they put their car in gear to go forward, the traction of the wheel on the pavement is digging that pavement out because it's all in line with the driveways. So I see that we're, Grand Avenue is getting repaved and talking to the residents in that neighborhood, they're not real happy about the fact that they got all these potholes. I'm not happy that I've got a dodge it with my bicycle running through there and I'm constantly buying new tires for my bike when I hit those potholes, so. That's my two cents worth of time.
Michael, you got anything for us to say?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other comments?
I would just like to make a comment about the tax rate. The state legislature has put us in a position with two very undesirable outcomes, in my view. And one of those outcomes is either we are forced to raise our rates in order to keep our M and O rate high in order to grow in the future, or we're forced to be a debtor city, as any other city in Texas is forced to be. Which one of those two options is the most?